Okay.
This is the November 26th meeting of the Hillsborough Board of Education. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 21st, 2018 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mrs. Boguszewski, Mrs. Santafonte, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Gillette, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Pulsifer, Dr. Swanson, Ms. Trujillo, and Mrs. Haas.
Here.
We have a court.
And we have a court plus one. Okay. Good timing. Okay. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the board recognizes correspondence received, and we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's great to see so many people out tonight. Each month, we try to spotlight the great things that are going on throughout the district, and tonight, we're going to spotlight the wonderful work of our student athletes from the fall season. And here to walk us through all of the incredible accomplishments of the athletes sitting in this room is our athletic director, Mr. Michael Davis.
Good evening, and thank you. On behalf of the Hillsborough High School Athletic Department, I'd like to thank Dr. Schiff and the Board of Education for your support throughout the year and for the opportunity to highlight these fine student athletes who participated this past fall season. Throughout the season, student athletes have to balance academics, athletics, jobs, and other various responsibilities. It takes hard work, time management, and dedication, and the student athletes that are here tonight are just a small sample size of what some of the best Hillsborough High School has to offer and what it embodies to be a Raider. We have multiple teams and several members from those teams here tonight who have garnered individual awards as well as team awards. When we introduce the teams, the attending members and the coaches, please come up to the podium area where I will be presenting your Skyland Conference Championship trophies amongst some other awards. First up, we have the 2018 Boys' Cross Country Team coached by Eric Rosenthal and Alicia As a team, they were the 2018 Skyland Conference Champions, and this past weekend finished third overall as a team in the 5,000-meter open run at the Nike Cross Northeast Regional. Individually, Ryan Mitchell qualified for the Metta Champions, and this past weekend finished second in the 5,000-meter open run at the Nike Cross Northeast Regional. Additionally, Ryan was first team All-Conference and first team All-County; Tyler Ballis was first team All-Conference and first team All-County; Keenan Yahi and Ryan Benny were second team All-County and second team All-Conference.
Parents, if you'd like to take a picture, please, you're invited up at this time to do so as well.
Come on, Mike, you're holding this up, Mike.
Congratulations, Boys' Cross Country, and a great fall. All right, up next is the Girls' Cross Country Team coached by Rich Reefee, Tiara Gordine, and Jason Rudich. The 2018 Girls' Cross Country Team were Skyland Conference Champions. Individually, Kate Lannahan earned first team All-Conference and second, or excuse me, first team All-County honors; Jenny Tavares earned first team All-Conference and second team All-County honors; Seema Hodgean was honorable mention All-Conference and second Congratulations, Girls' Cross Country, and a great fall. Okay, up next is your 2018 Girls' Gymnastics Team coached by Beth Marin and Sarah Paly. Both are not here tonight. Coach Marin is sick, but there are representatives from the team. This past fall, the 2018 Girls' Gymnastics Team was the 2018 Raider Invitational Champs, 2018 Skyland Conference Champs, 2018 Somerset County Champions, five years in a row, 2018 Central Jersey Section Two State Champions, five years in a row. Individually, Samantha Ringel was named first team All-Skyland Conference and first team All-State; Haley Mandell, Brielle Seidel, and Cindy Liu all garnered first team All-Conference honors; Emma Thompson and Renee Kinsler garnered second team All-Conference honors. Congratulations, gymnastics, on a great fall season. And finally, the 2018 Boys' Soccer Team coached by Eric Puma and Nick Angressani, which to date is one of the best high school soccer programs Hillsborough High School has seen. As a team, they were the 2018, as a team, they were the 2018 Skyland Conference Champions and 2018 Somerset County Champions. The team was undefeated through the entire regular season at Somerset County Tournament and was ranked as high as number eight in the state and finished with a record of 16 wins, one loss, and two ties. Their first and only loss came in the final game of the season in the state tournament, Individually, Justin Dominique earned first team All-Skyland Conference, first team All- Somerset County, number-one-ranked player in Somerset County, first team All-Central Jersey. He was a regional All-American and was invited to play in the Senior All-Star Game on December Nick Byrd was first team All-Skyland Conference, first team All-Somerset County, ranked as the number-one goalkeeper in Somerset County, and was first team All-Central Jersey. John Gataletta and Zuka Bedo Shibi were named first team All-Skyland Conference and first team All-Somerset County. Nick Pagato, Christian Pagato, and Scott Bandola were named second team All-Skyland Conference. And head coach Eric Puma was named Soccer Coaches Association of New Jersey, Central Jersey Coach of the Year, and was invited to coach the Senior All-Star Game on December Congratulations, Boys' Soccer, on a tremendous season. Ladies and gentlemen, our spotlight on athletics for the fall 2018 season.
I would like to thank our athletic director, all of the coaches, and of course, these incredible student athletes who came out tonight. Let's hear it for them, everyone. I'd like to ask for a brief recess so the board members can actually greet some of our student athletes and congratulate them on their honors. So ordered, thank you. In session?
We are back to a much smaller audience, but just as.
It was great seeing our athletes do such a wonderful job, so accomplished.
Yes.
Tonight, we're going to take a little bit of a turn and talk about our Investing in Our Future initiative, and tonight, we have Dr. Ross Haber, our demographer, who's going to share with us the enrollment projection and utilization study we just completed.
Good evening. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight, and let's get through this and see where we go. Okay, so I was engaged by the Board of Education to conduct demographic and facility utilization study, and the purpose of the study was first to provide the Hillside Board of Education with a five-year enrollment projection. The second was to conduct a facility utilization analysis, in other words, to go through the buildings, take a look at room availability, program availability, how the rooms were being used, and put them together with the projections to see what the future planning of the district could be. Okay, and one of the ways would be to determine the ways in which the district could implement a full-day kindergarten program for the 2019-2020 school year, also to assess the need for new high school, and to explore alternative grade-level organizational structures should the district decide to go that route. So those were the overriding purposes of the study. Okay. In the, I'm going to just use this so I can see my numbers a little bit better. Okay, there are two lines that you're taking a look at here. The top line, well, the top line takes a look at what the enrollment projection would be in five years should you guys implement a full-day kindergarten program. As you can see, the enrollment number going out five years would be, total enrollment in the district, if there were a full-day kindergarten, would be 7,859. I also did a projection based upon the half-day kindergarten system to see what the numbers would be. If we stayed with the half-day kindergarten, the projection numbers out would be 7,723. So there's about 130 or somewhat difference between the projections going out with a full-day kindergarten versus projections going out with a half-day kindergarten. The next page, please. Right, in this, these slides are a summary of the enrollment by grade level over the next five years, again, comparing half-day with full-day. The top table shows that in 2013-14, there were 2,442 kindergarten through grade four kids. You opened school this year with 2,510, so over those five years, it was a 68-student growth. The projection going out, and again, this is with half-day kindergarten, shows a slight decline, marginal decline, to about 2,500 kids, which is less than one-half of 1% decline over five years. This school, Orton Road Intermediate School, had a marginal increase between 2013 and 14 from 1,102 to 1,123, and that was a change of 21 students, or about 1.91%. The projection has the school going to 1,195 by 2023-24, which is a difference of 72 students, or about 6.41%. So this school is showing some growth. The middle school showed some fairly significant growth, going from 1098 in 2013-14 to 1,179 in 2018-19, which was a change of about 81 students, or about 7.38% growth. We're looking for the enrollment to increase to about 1,209 by 2023-24, which would be an increase of 30 students, or about 2.54%. The high school was 2,284 in 2013-14, opened this year at 2,257, which was a slight decline of about 27 students, or about 1.18%. The projection at five years is to 2,378, which would be a growth of 121 students, or 5.36%. The overall growth in the district over the five years, the overall growth in the district from 2013-14 to 2018-19 was 3.37%. The projection at the 2023-24 is 4.17%. So we're talking about adding 309 additional students district-wide, and that's only if, that's based on a half-day kindergarten. Going to a full-day kindergarten, the growth would be about 4.86% for the K4. There would be a growth of about 122 students, so that's actually a net 132 more than it would be on the half-day, because on the half-day, it's minus 10; on the full day, the projection is 122. Orton Road would grow an additional 76 students by 2023-24, which would be 6.77% growth. The middle school would grow by about 30 students, from the current 1,179 to 1,209, and that's 30. So as you get out further, the numbers kind of come together, because those kids have not gone through the system. And the high school would be, would also gain, the 121 would be the same. Now, one of the things I did in the study, and I'll go through in the next two pages, was I was asked to speak to the town planner and talk about potential new developments. Now, I looked at what these new developments could be, but keep in mind, none of these developments have approval, none of them before the planning board. All of them are in the ether out there, but you should really understand that these things could happen. So the last table on the bottom states, tells you that if these developments did come in, and they came in over the next five years, they produced about 236 students in total, of which 47, 165 would be elementary school level or K4 level, 47 would be the middle school range, five to eight, and 24 students would be in the high school range, about 24, which would be about 236 students in total. The next page of this report, this just identifies the housing developments as they were given to you. Now, keep in mind, there's a lot of data in detail that doesn't, that isn't really known. So these are really estimates. So I had, I did estimates based upon some discussions with what these developments could look like, and based on that, how many apartments would be, how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom, how many three-bedroom. We did, I figured about 80% of the units would be market rate and about 20% affordable, because that's basically what the state distributes them. So based on that, I came up with an overall average of about a 0.44 yield. The total number of units, if all of these things happened as the planner told me, would be about 536 units, and I, based upon, again, estimates of types of apartments, I would come up, I would say that is approximately 236 students. But keep in mind, this is a projection, it's a projection based upon experience that I've had in other districts with similar developments. It's a projection based upon a number of unknowns that are important, but it's, and also, the fact is, one of these may come in, all of them may come in, none of them may come in. But I think it's really worth the board watching these very, very carefully over time, finding what, keeping in touch with the town planning board, finding what's before the board, finding what the final outcomes are of these applications, when, if these applications come across, and then, of course, knowing what schools they're going to impact. Are they all in one particular area, affecting one attendance zone? Are they multiple? Of course, they'll all, they'll all impact ours, they'll all impact the middle school, and they'll all impact the high school, but it's determined which elementary schools would have it. Next page, if I may. All I did on this page was I expanded, what I did was I expanded the tables you saw on two pages back to include the development numbers. So in other words, what I, on the half-day kindergarten page, I said that if these developments came in, and if you remained with a half-day kindergarten, it's possible that your total enrollment would not increase only by 309, but increase by about 545, or about 7.35% overall. With full-day kindergarten, the district projection was 6% increase, but with the developments, we're looking at maybe 9.19%. Now, keep in mind, it's a very loose estimation, okay? But it's a good range to keep in mind. You can go with a full-day kindergarten between 6 and 9%, with a half-day kindergarten between 4.17 and 7.35. So there's a range of outcomes that could happen, and when you're considering future planning, this really kind of needs to be thought of. Okay, so those are, so those are the overall projections. You all have the more fully-developed report that has the more extensive tables, but these are the, these are the projections going out, these are the possible impacts of the housing developments, and now, I want to deviate my presentation just a little bit, okay? This is not a horror movie, The Incredible Shrinking School, but it's, it's a, it's some, oftentimes, when I do these presentations, I'll, excuse me, oftentimes, when I do these presentations, I'll get things like, I don't know, there were 10,000 kids in the school district when I attended, now there are 6,000, and you have no room. Why is that? Or when I went to school A, or I went to school B, there were, you know, 1,000 kids in the building, we had, we filled up all the classes, now there are 600 kids in the building, and you say we short rooms, you say we can't do full-day kindergarten, we can't do those kinds of things. So I kind of put together this little slideshow to kind of inform people as to what's actually happened over time in schools. So if we go to the first page, okay, this is generic school. Don't try and figure out which Hillsborough school it is, because it's not. It's just a generic school from some random school district. But what I did was, I said, okay, let's imagine this school was built in 1965, and in 1965, this school was built with a capacity of 750, a capacity of 750 students, okay? And there were a total of 30 classrooms. Out of those 30 classrooms, we took an art, we created an art room, we created a music room. So we had a dedicated art room, a dedicated music room, and 28 general education classrooms. If this building was full, we would use all 28 education classrooms, and we'd have 27 students per class. And that's high, but maybe 1965, that wasn't so high, but that's just a number, it could be, you know. Okay, go to the next page. Now we come to the next page, and we go up 10 years, and that's now 1975. Same building, capacity of 750, same number of classrooms, 30. We want our dedicated art room, we want our dedicated music room, but now, by law, we have to have a self, one room dedicated to self-contained children, and it has to be a full-size classroom by law. It has to be a 750 or 850, so we now need a classroom. We need a resource room, okay? We, or, I ask, we need a resource room, has to be a full-size room. So now, we have a building that we only have 26 general education classrooms, because we've now lost, well, we're keeping our dedicated art room, we're keeping our music room, we create a resource room, we create a self-contained room, but we want not to impact any programs, okay? So now, that, that building with a capacity of 750 has 26 classrooms, and if we don't take away a program and substitute a program, we are now up to 29 students in a class in a 750-student building. Now we're going to jump ahead 10 years, it's my last jump, okay? Oh, but there'll be one more after this. So now, so we've lost two classrooms. So now, we're 1985, okay? And we have the same building, same 30 rooms, same total classrooms of 30, we have a dedicated art room, a dedicated music room, a self-contained special education room, a resource room. Now, it's 1985, and we've got to do something with those TRS-80 computers. Remember those? Okay? We got to stack a room. Laugh. Maybe there are people who don't, that's giving something away about me. But anyway, we've got to stack those rooms and make our kids all little programs. So now we take a full-size classroom, we get our 30 desktop computers in there, we've lost a room. So now, we've lost five, we've lost three more, three classrooms, we're down to 25 general education students, and if we don't want to impact any programs, and we fill the building to capacity, we're at 30 kids in a class. Well, you know at this point, that's not going to happen, so we start looking at things like art on a cart, music on a cart, those kinds of things to capture classrooms, okay? And we've made some trade-offs, things we have to do, we're mandated for special needs, we're mandated for resource rooms, we want to make our kids programmers, so we have to make some sacrifices, and the sacrifice may be, well, let's put art on a cart, let's put music on a cart. Now we're going to jump all the way to 2018, okay? That was enough years. Same building, same 750 capacity, same 30 classrooms, and we have an art room, music room, self-contained, special ed, resource room, computer lab, now we have ESL, now we have OTPT, now we have speech, now we have word language. So we're now down six classrooms. So now, our building, which, our building, which was built for 750 and had a capacity of, a capacity of 750 with 30 classrooms, in reality, in reality, has a capacity of 540, because we only have 25 classrooms to give to the kids, and if we wanted to, if we wanted to go back to a state of 27, we would have to do something about replacing those classrooms. And to boot, no one wants a class size of 27. So the point of this little exercise, just to show that buildings haven't changed very much, but your requirements as educators tremendously, and they have impacted, they have impacted your ability to provide services to kids, or, and/or make trade-offs. So for example, if you've got word language on a cart, okay, you don't want that, but there's no choice. If there are any buildings with art on a cart, you don't want that, but there's no choice. If you want a full-day kindergarten, you have to make some choices also, and those choices may be some expansion. So that's basically, that's basically what that shows. It's an explanation as to what's happened to schools over the years. Next page. So now, we'll go through the enrollment projections and facility analysis model, and what I did with this, to get to this, aside from the projections, the projections were done using historical data and, you know, and using, looking at housing data and things like that. The process for the facility analysis started when I surveyed each of the building principals. Each of the building principals got a questionnaire from me, and it just allowed them to describe their building, tell me how many sections they have, how they're using different classrooms. I then went through the facility, the facility planning study from the SDA, which actually gave me all of your classroom square footage and things like that. Each principal gave me a building map, and they indicated in the building map how each room was used. So I put all that data together, and then I actually met with each principal and had, and spoke to them. I wanted to make sure I understood the structure of the building, the things that were going on, what some of the issues were, what some of the space issues were, what some of the other issues were, and I took all that, and I put that up against the projections, and that helped me determine how much, how much room you actually have in the district for different kinds of programs. So the first chart is just, is, it shows the enrollment for the kindergarten, the enrollment for the K4 schools, using both the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, which is the top line, which indicates that at the, and by the way, if you take a look at the, at the data to the left of that blue line, you can see, except for one anomalous year, the, pretty much, the enrollment has kind of been increasing in the school district. The projection on half-day is kind of leveling off towards the end, but it's also leveling off at a high number. It's leveling it off where your buildings are pretty close to capacity. If you go to full-day, you see the numbers are significantly higher, so at the end of the projection period, your elementary, your K4 schools are going to be about 130 or 130 or so kids higher than the half-day kindergarten. And by the way, just how I configured all this, what I did was, and I want to thank, it's always good to have a pre-meeting meeting, okay? Because I had to correct one or two of my assumptions, and the biggest correction I made was, was the assumption of the growth between kindergarten and first grade. My initial assumption was wrong, and after discussing with the board and seeing some perception, going back, checking my numbers, I used a 33% increase for kindergarten, so for kindergarten growth. So if your, if the projection based upon your current enrollment was, let's say, 300 kindergarten kids, okay, I increased that by 30%, because the theory being that when you go full-time, most of the people who are withholding the students for a half-day program are going to participate in the program. It may not be all, but I think 33% is a safe number. If I really, I took out one, one year that was an anomalous year, that was an outlier in terms of growth size, and it, otherwise, would have been a 1.38, and I think that, about 38%, I think that would have been too high. So I think 33%, it's interesting, because that's the number that Dr. Schiff had come up with himself before we even started the study. So that's, that's the K4 enrollment. Now, we go to the next page, and what this page is showing is the five-year projection for full-day kindergarten using that 33% factor, and if we were to use that, Amsterdam currently had, currently would need, it currently has three half, it's using three rooms for half-day kindergarten. To go full-day, it would, it would need five. We looked, we looked at projections and things like that, and they do need two additional classrooms for that, okay? Hillsborough is going to also need five, but the projections show that in each of the next five years, they'll have one available classroom. So that classroom will be brought back for kindergarten, meaning that they need one additional structure to accommodate kindergarten. Sunny Mead needs, has, has, has two, and would need five, okay? They'll be able to recover one classroom through, through breakage, that, you know, meaning that they'll have an open classroom by the projections, so they'll need two structures, two additional rooms. Triangle. Triangle, does need two, but there are currently two modulators. And one of those modules could be repurposed as, as a general ed classroom. So they would need one additional structure. Now Woodfern, and this is a tough one, um, but in Woodfern, they're currently using three full-size classrooms for AIS and one for resource room. We could, you, two of those AIS rooms, which are full-size classrooms, could be brought back as kindergarten rooms and the, and the one remaining AIS room could be subdivided as it is in other, other schools. Uh, so there are no, you don't have to put modulators in that building. And Woods Road needs four, has two, needs two. So there's a total of, a total of eight additional classrooms are needed, uh, to accommodate kindergarten. Now, those classrooms, what you're going to add are obviously going to be modular classrooms. And this, I think there's general agreement amongst principal, myself, the administration, probably all of you, that if you do that, kindergarten kids should be in the main building. Okay, so anything, so the modulators, you, other programs or other grade levels might be, might be located in the module, in the modular classrooms. Because again, kindergarten children should be in the main building, you know, many reasons. They have to go to the nurse, they have to go to lunch, um, you know, you could lose half a day just putting on a kid's coat, you know, we all had five-year-olds, so we know that. So, um, that, those are, so, so in order to implement full-day kindergarten for September, which I think is what the board would like to do, you would need to add eight structures, eight classrooms to get, to get there. Okay? So that, that's, that's the, that's the kindergarten. So now we go on to, so then, now I didn't only do kindergarten, I went to the different schools. So I went to Orton Road, my, was my next stop. Okay? Um, the state capacity, the FES capacity, um, is, for this building is 1,046. The current enrollment is 1,165. Um, and the, the table on the left shows the number of general education classrooms available in the building, which is about 57. Uh, the number of specialty rooms such as art and music, as well as the number of available spaces for small group instruction and, and for, and for, uh, other programs. Uh, there are seven world language, is that correct, number correct? There are seven world language teachers who don't have a room, who are doing it on a cart. So all of your languages are on a cart. Um, and, you know, that's not the best way to go. So there might be some consideration in terms of looking at what can be done in this building to restructure, to maybe make some changes. Not suggesting any, in this case, I'm not suggesting any, um, new construct, uh, modulators because that would not be part of what you're doing for, I guess, March, but, um, it needs to be looked at. Uh, the class sizes in the building, uh, they're running in, in the, in the mid twenties, low to mid twenties on average. So, um, not terrible, but again, um, there is space needed for, for programs such as, um, world languages. Okay, middle school? Middle school enrollment, um, as you can see, as you can see, grew from 2013, 14 to 12, to, to 2018, 19 by about a, a little over 80 kids. Uh, it's going to be fairly stable up until the last year, we'll go to about 12,47. So the middle school is going to experience some growth. In visiting the middle school, okay, um, going, okay, the capacity of the middle school, again, this is the state-rated capacity, is 932. The current enrollment is 12,37. The enrollment is projected to be reasonably stable, there's an increase of about 40 kids, but over three grades in a middle school, that's not, um, that's, that's pretty, pretty well-stable, it's not going to be a huge spike. This school currently operates on a nine-period day with each grade divided into five teams. Okay? And what's good about, it functions, you know, I've been in, in a large number of school districts and getting scheduling correctly to make these teams operate is difficult. In this case, the teams have common pressure, common prep periods. So every team has a common prep period, which is great, which is exactly what you want in a team situation. Another thing that's really positive is the majority of teachers have their own classrooms. Um, and I, I was a teacher, I was a middle school teacher, well, actually was a junior high school teacher in New York City for a number of years. And, um, five periods a day, I had my own classroom, three periods a day, someone else used it and it was wrecked. I, it was a different circumstance, but when you have your own classroom, you can deck, you know, it's interesting, you go into an elementary school in this district, most of the good school districts, the classrooms are beautiful, they're beautifully decorated, everything is nice because the teachers own the room. You get to secondary schools, not so much. Orton Road is different because the teachers, the majority of have their own classrooms. That's kind of a good thing. Uh, the class sizes are a little large in the middle school, they're running between 26 and 27 students. And, uh, the principals talked about some issues that they have. They were concerned because the music rooms have little sound buffering. So you can hear, the, the, the music flows, I won't say the noise, the music flows, um, you know, through the walls and impacts other areas of the school building. The gym has a very limited seat capacity. Uh, there's no space, um, available for full, for grade-level meetings. Uh, the multipurpose room only seats about 400 kids, so you can't have full grade level, much less full school meetings. Um, there are some, there are some split rooms, uh, like, like there's an art room that's split because there's no sound barriers. If there are two classes going on, there's a lot of spillover and that was a concern. I'm sure you've not heard this one before, uh, this is a surprise, heating and ventilation are an issue. The, the corridors are narrow, they create crowded, crowded conditions during hall passing. Uh, there's not enough lab table spaces, um, and some kids in some of the labs overcrow, oversubscribed labs have to use tabletops and things that are not, um, that are not, not really lab tables. And undersized, the undersized cafeteria creates a need for more lunch periods than they probably would like to have. Uh, because the more lunch periods they have, the more difficulty is in scheduling academic programs. Okay, high school. The high school, as you can see, was fairly stable between 2013, 2014. As a matter of fact, there was a five-student differentiation in those years. But as you can see, going up, going through 2023, 24, there were 2,435 students. So the school, the high school, which at the moment, um, is a fairly crowded building, is going to grow even, even more. So what were the major issues at the high school? Well, first of all, there's, the current capacity of the high school is 1,517. Uh, the current enrollment is 2,313 and the projected enrollment is 2,435. So the building is really at, well, it's well above state capacity, but it's certainly above logical capacity, okay, in terms of where we are. Um, the cafeteria has a capacity that's less than 800, uh, which requires five lunch periods, each divided into two 24 to 26-minute periods. So in, in effect, there are 10 lunch periods in a high school. Um, the schedule is 7.5 periods per day over a six-day cycle. So if you think about that, that's, that's, it's not an eight-period day. So it lim, it's, it creates, um, uh, it creates a limited ability to, to schedule. It also takes away an opportunity, at least one period a day of an opportunity for a kid to take another course or to schedule in another course or to take a singleton that may be a high-demand course and make it a doubleton, meaning it meets two times a day. Um, so that, that's, that's a, a, um, a problem. There is a shortage of labs and an inability to provide more than one section, lower demand subject and the consequence of course conflicts, limiting student opportunities. One of the things that really struck me, and I think it's, it kind of, um, it kind of really explains what I'm saying here, uh, the AP physics class is, uh, the AP physics class has one section of 38 students. Okay? Uh, and it only could appear, it only appears one time in the schedule. Now, it's, you know, we can all say, and well, honestly, 38 students in one class doesn't work, but there's no choice because there's no other place to put them. But there's another consequence. Let's say that that's a singleton course that only appears once. Let's say there's a child who wants to take a subject that's another singleton that conflicts with that. They've got to make the choice, which one do they go? Because it only appears once on a schedule. If something can appear twice on a schedule, it gives, it gives a greater opportunity for, for the child. And it's just the shortage of labs, um, is, uh, just, you know, it's, it's, it's consequential. Also, uh, the car, you know, the building, I, I, my understanding is that the high school has had a number of renovations over the years and as a result, kind of got some herky-jerky hallways, the corridors are very narrow, the stairways are very narrow, outstanding one section of the building where I don't know how kids even get through there during passing, I mean, it's that, it was that crowded. I think it also, there was one instance that I heard, uh, that some kids shortcut through the loading dock and the principal's not really thrilled with that, but again, they've got to get from one side of the building to the other and they can't, they've got to do it in five minutes and that's problematic. Heating and ventilation is, is an issue, there's a lack of reliable air conditioning and again, this is common, um, common with most, uh, common with most of the schools in the district. Uh, the addition of a new high school would allow more flexibility in determining alternate organizational structures if and when they are needed. Anything that, anything that you want to do long-term really stems from building a new high school and creating the high school as a middle school and then doing what the other seven or eight schools in terms of organizational structure, what you think is best. So are my conclusions and recommendations. Okay? A full-day kindergarten can be accomplished in the short term by adding modular classrooms to some of the K4 schools and we need a total of nine. And as I said earlier, uh, I think that, and I think we might all agree, that kindergarten classrooms should be housed, or kindergarten children should be housed in the main building, in the main buildings when they come back. And, next one. Um, I looked at two organization, I talked about grade-level organizational structures, um, that, one of the things I looked at were, were five K2 schools, the current, five of the current elementary schools and two, uh, three-five schools, Aris and the current middle school. The current high school would then become a middle school and a new 2,500 to 2,600 student high school to be built. Uh, the structure would provide spaces needed and reduce the need for modular classrooms and would be sustainable over time. So this model, again, would be sustainable over time, would be, would be, when I looked at the rooms, would be able to eliminate the modulators, which is supposed to be a short-term solution, solution anyway, and based upon the projection, would be sustainable over time. The second, the second, um, one that I looked at, grade-level organizational change, was seven K5 schools, one 68 middle school and one high school. And Aris and the middle school would become two large K5 schools, Hillsboro Elementary School would be closed. But a complete analysis of this organizational structure really requires doing redistricting modeling because the loc, geographic locations of the schools, you'd want to see what the most sense-making boundaries are, what the street patterns are, you know, the, what the crossing patterns are. So that would really require looking at attendance zones to make a determination as to if this is a doable, you know, and if it's doable and if it makes sense. From a, um, room point of view, it does, because you've got two very large K5 schools between Aris and, and the current middle school. But how you distribute students, that could be an issue with that. So it might make that kind of difficult. And that is my presentation. And I'm certainly open to questions and concerns and, um, anything else.
Thank you, Dr. Haber. Questions from the board?
Anybody? Yes, Lorraine?
Thank you for that presentation. Um, it was quite interesting. Uh, one question that I had was, um, what we have been seeing, uh, the board over the, my five or six years on the board now, is growing enrollment in our special education programs that require more staffing and obviously more classrooms as, as that grows. Did you take that into account?
I'm sorry, can you repeat, just a little bit louder?
Oh, um, the one thing that we've really been seeing is a significant growth in special education children enrolling in our district. And so I'm wondering if you took that into account, given the greater requirements for space and staffing?
The answer to your question is yes, but of course, one, one of the things that's very, it's very difficult to predict. So I did it on, if you look at some of the tables, I did it on averages because kids are being tested all year round, being tested in the summer. So, uh, there is an allowance in this for that consideration. Okay, there are rooms that would, there are rooms that are special needs rooms that are taken out of the standard classroom. In other words, I don't count them as, you know, if, if a building needs three rooms for autistic kids, just for example, and it can only be six, I don't put them in the general ed rooms, they need to be counted elsewhere. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dina?
Thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Sasan. I was piggybacking on that issue, is not just the classrooms for classrooms, but what about physical therapy, OT? If you have more and more children that need services and you only have one room dedicated in each school, that isn't accounted for. My other question was, in Woodfern, you said we don't need modular units, but we are going to have to divide a space. And then, but my question really is, will that space be up to code because you had mentioned earlier that rooms have to be a certain size?
I, okay, in doing the study, that's, that's a great question. Doing the study, I looked at room for kindergarten. I made assumptions that some of these, these rooms were in place. Uh, but I do know that there are schools that got OTP, OTPT in small spaces that need to be expanded. So that's something that, um, I think in, in consideration for future expansion, okay? I don't know if it's, if this is for the March, March referendum. I think we're looking more towards the kindergarten and the maintenance, if I'm not mistaken?
It is for the March referendum, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for next year.
Yeah, for next year.
But I think Mrs. Centefonte's, um, question goes to the, um, whether or not what we were placing was a full classroom size. And we actually have some multiple small group instructional spaces that are in a full-size classroom, not to put a kindergarten class in a small group instructional space. So it was a regular-sized classroom that had multiple small group instruction that was there that would, um, that may be put out into, um, into the trailer or may be absorbed into other small group instructional spaces. It's actually the only school that does not need Woodfern, that does not need an additional trailer in order to house full-day K. Everyone else does.
There, by the way, just if you, if you look at the tables, the more expanded tables in the study, you'll see that on, along the side, um, I've got rooms that are currently used in that building for different programs. So if, like, for example, just Hillsboro, Hillsboro Elementary, there's an SGI room, a speech room, there's a dedicated OT room. Now these are smaller classrooms, they're like 400 square feet, you know, so that, and there are some subdivided classrooms that account as the smaller rooms. So I did consider those, yes.
Right, but there's no doubt that in the future, we'll need additional small group instructional spaces.
That's what I'm trying to, since we're trying to look at this, as he says, an organizational change is contingent on construction of new high school and that we're supposed to be looking at things from a long-term project, long-term growth. I just want to make sure that from the, from the beginning, we're putting in one program or we're asking people to load on one program that's going to cause additional short-term problems in every other building. And that's only if this goes through, if everything goes through in the end. And so I just want to make sure that what we're asking people to deal with now can really be supported if everything doesn't work out according to our long-term plan.
Yes.
Yes, Greg?
Uh, I want to speak to something that Lorraine asked about. And maybe Dr. Schiff, maybe you, you can answer to this. Um, I, I don't know that the growth in special education has, um, needs in our district has meant more, um, self-contained classrooms. In my experience, what I've seen, it's meant more teachers, uh, as a second teacher in typical, in general education classrooms. So I, that which needs, which doesn't require any more space. Um, but I haven't seen a breakdown of that, but I don't, is that, what do you think about that? I mean, Dr. Schiff?
I think the answer is both. We, we actually do need more small group instructional space as well as, um, as you know, through the budget development process and through the additions that we have during the budget year, um, we have in-class support teachers that actually push in to the regular ed setting as well.
Right, so, okay, so small group instruction spaces, which could be 400 square feet classroom, not a 750, things like that?
That's correct. There are some times when, and we've added additional autistic classes, self-contained classes that require a full classroom size and preschool handicap we've added over the past couple of years.
I just have a question.
Yes?
So this is all very-
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. So this is all very exciting, you know, news and everything that you presented, but what schools need, what schools would we do the modular on? I'm sorry, I'm just getting slightly confused.
Say, oh, you want to know which schools have modulators?
Yeah.
I'm putting it up on the board.
Amsterdam would get two, Hillsboro Elementary one, Sunnymeat two, Triangle one, Woods Road two, and None at Woodfern.
Thank you. So that all stays until then, until the new development that you want is built?
If we build a new high school, then there's no more need for, for temporary facilities for the kindergarten classes.
And then God forbid, the referendum doesn't go through, then what happens? What is our plan then?
Right, well, that, that's something that we have the space now to be able to contain it over, you know, the short term until we start to see, um, particular enrollment growth in five years or so. So the board would have to contemplate a couple of things. One is, um, if the kindergarten passes, but the high school doesn't pass, do we want to add on to the existing facilities to deal with the overall enrollment growth that we're going to be facing anyway? Do we wish to have another referendum on a smaller high school? And we've discussed some of that in- And we've discussed some of that in, in committee. Or do we want to go back to halftime kindergarten? I, I think the choices are discreet, um, but they certainly would, would need to be discussed and have hammered out in committee and, and discussed in public as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chris?
I, I think one important thing for the board to consider and, and for the public as we go through these two referendums is that, um, if you look at where we're at now, we're already overcrowded and the, the population is going to grow according to the study, that if both of these referendums fail, then, I mean, the idea that if we don't go full-day kindergarten somehow that saves us, that's not going to happen. We're going to, we already have problems, and if these referendums both fail, we can struggle along the way we are for a little while, but when you look at those numbers, we're going to face some real problems, uh, in a couple of years if these both fail because we do not have the space at all for that growth. And it's either more modular, keep adding more modular classrooms outside or something else. But if these referendums don't pass, it's not like the problems go away and we were asking for something extra. These numbers show that we're already in trouble for space and that it's only going to get worse. So it, it, it's not, at least I don't view this as a choice of getting a good thing or not, it's getting what we need or not. And if we don't get what we need, then what are we going to do at that point?
Well, I would think we would have to go out, go back to the drawing boards and once again establish a plan for what we need. Because honestly, and I really appreciated that presentation about the incredible shrinking school building, but it's not acceptable to have teachers on carts. It's not acceptable to have like an entire area like World Language operating wherever they can. We've had situations at all of our schools where things like speech have taken place in closets. Not acceptable. And, you know, anybody could argue the numbers. I think, uh, Dr. Haber has done a really good job, not only assessing the numbers, but the educational impacts of those numbers. And what we have to look at first is the educational program, okay? At some point, we're not going to be able to deliver an appropriate educational program with the lack of space that we're dealing with. And one of the other things that people have to remember is that our high school, as much as we love our high school, it's not a modern building. It's not a modern high school. It's not what kids need going forward. And I love to remind people, the last time it was assessed that we needed a new high school was what, nineteen ninety-six? It's more than twenty years. So, you know, if people don't think we've been conservative here, we have, but it's sort of hitting the fan at this point. And people really need to focus on that. Yes?
So I guess, so I guess the main concern of a lot of people, as much as we want everything and need everything, I mean, what, I guess, how much is, like, we're talking about taxes. I mean, what is going to be the final estimation of everything? I mean, because, I mean, as you heard, a lot of people come up, I mean, budget is huge. I mean, if you're talking that the average household of Hillsborough is, let's just say, four hundred thousand, and if these taxes go up over a thousand dollars or whatever, I mean, a lot of people can't afford that. So, I mean, that's, I mean, it makes me nervous.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, I mean, I'm just wondering, I mean, what, what is, what is going to happen in the next year or so, when, when this all comes down? I mean, if, if my taxes are going to go up, I need to start budgeting like yesterday.
Yeah.
Because I do, I do love our town and I want all the, all this greatness to happen, but, I mean, oh my gosh, if our taxes are going to go up, as much as I'm assuming that they could easily go up, I mean, I personally can't afford it. And I mean, and I'm thinking, I mean, I have a pretty great job, and if I can't, I mean, what, what about everybody else?
No.
And my average home is, is well over four hundred. So I just, I, I need to, I kind of need to know now or with, or, or something. I mean, I need some kind of number. The people of our town need some kind of number to start budgeting with the new year, especially since if your taxes, as we all know, what our president did, anything over twelve thousand, we now have to pay for.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's just yet an extra cost that we have at least had a leeway to put money aside, and yet this is, could possibly be more.
Yeah.
So it just, it really makes me, I mean, as much as I get excited about all the new bells and whistles, I mean, it really makes me nervous and I can only imagine all the other people that are on, you know, limited income and whatnot.
No, I, I agree and I feel your pain personally as well.
Yeah, I know, you guys are retired.
But, um, you know, the fact of the matter is that we, we have a responsibility to the educational program here, and it's not like we've been going after bells and whistles. Hillsborough has never, you know, been inclined towards exceptionally, you know, dramatic or, uh, excessive construction. And that may be part of the problem we face now.
Right.
But our classrooms weren't built for thirty in a class. It's not been this board or this community's wish to have large class sizes. It's not been this community's wish, um, to have, um, limited programmatic opportunities for our kids. So, yeah, if the referendum doesn't go through, there might be a, you know, choice that has to be made in terms of what we can do without funding for new school buildings. And our kids would continue on in the high school. Um, you know, I, I don't want to go into overly dramatic scenarios because I really don't think anybody wants to hear about that. But honestly, I think we've been very sensitive. The numbers that we've started talking about started higher. They've been cut significantly already through our committee process. Um, it's been pretty aggressive, um, in terms of where we started to where we are today. And we're still looking for offsets. We're still looking for a lot of different offsets that may occur. Uh, Dr. Schiff, at our last meeting, uh, did an entire presentation about how our state aid numbers would be affected positively by implementing a full-day kindergarten, um, to the extent that a few of us were calling it a no-brainer. Um, but it's not all about money. It's mostly about our kids. And giving kids a full-day kindergarten program is something that's worth it on its face. So if we have to do modular buildings for a couple of years in order to accomplish that, and let me be clear, we're not putting the babies into any modular building. We're putting office space in there and freeing up, um, you know, current classrooms that are being used for that, if at all possible. So be that all as it may, this has been a very thoughtful process, and we've gotten to the point where we are today. We do not have final numbers yet. We're getting closer, and hopefully by the next meeting.
Well, yeah, no for the high school. The high school's going to take more time. What happens is, is that the architect needs to, um, complete the application process to the DOE. From that application process, we'll know what qualifies for state aid, and that's state funding. And that's not insignificant. So we need to be accurate with our community and, um, come out with, with realistic estimates about what's going on, and we rely upon our professionals for providing that information. I anticipate that for the high school, it will be in the March timeframe that we'll have an estimate that we can go out to the public and say, this is what, this is what, um, we anticipate the cost will be, this is what, how much the state is going to pick up in terms of the cost. The, um, there was a very large statewide ballot question to, um, to fund half a billion dollars for public school infrastructure for lead remediation, for vocational programs at the county vocational programs, um, to expand, uh, their offerings. And third is school security. And part of our facility upgrades, including part of the new high school, is going to be aligned with security improvements. So, um, there's a coverage that, that comes from, uh, that will come from Trenton that will help offset that cost. We also have agreed that Hillsborough Elementary School would be closed as a result of, of any, um, building of a new high school. That in and of itself has great value, and we would need to know and understand what value that brings to the board as well. And the community needs to know what, what that's going to be and how that can offset other costs, um, on, on top of it. So, uh, I think it's very important to have a degree of comfort and accuracy before we go out, um, publicly with any cost estimates and tax implications for that. What we will have within the next weeks is, um, the, the, um, March twelfth referendum, uh, levy adjustment and the tax implication. So that, that's going to be coming in the next week. In the next round of committees, as well as our next board meeting, this will be discussed publicly.
Yes, Jane?
Um, so I have a few comments. I have some questions for Mr., um, Dr. Haber, but first I wanted to address, um, your comment, Judy, about state aid offsets for full-day kindergarten. I don't think that it's a one-to-one comparison, the way I read it. We are going to be raising the tax levy so that we can, over the course of several years, potentially get back that state aid. So I don't think it's a fair comparison to say that it's, I forgot the words you used, but, um-
No-brainer.
Oh, no, I don't think it's a no-brainer. I mean, I think it's, you're asking the community to, to up, to foot the bill upfront so that on the back end, that they'll get money back, but they, I forget, I think maybe Dana, you had said, somebody had said on the other side that it's not, or maybe it was the, somebody from the audience had said, but it's not the Hillsborough taxpayers that are going to be getting the offsets. That money is going to go back into the budget. So I don't think it's a one-to-one comparison. I think that's, it's, it's not, um, forthcoming to say that to the public. I think that we have to just be clear, like, yes, the money, we, by that calculation, it was compelling in the sense that the school budget would receive money back from state aid, but not the taxpayer.
I didn't particularly say that, okay?
But you're saying it's a no-brainer.
And we had this discussion at our last board meeting, okay? Dana wasn't at our last board meeting, so I felt it was important to respond to that.
But I think it's not a fair statement. I don't think it's, I don't think it's clear. I think it's misleading to say that I'm going to raise the levy by X and I'm going to reduce the levy by, sorry, I'm going to receive, actually, I'm not going to receive more money.
I simply said we would be getting an offset of state aid.
Right, and I, and I don't think it's a fair comparison.
I didn't characterize it any other way.
All right, well, I just don't think it's a fair comparison.
May I respond, Madam President? Okay, so, look, over a five-year period, if we're going to collect fifteen million additional dollars in the tax levy for, uh, full-day kindergarten, I don't think the offset of reduction of state aid over a five-year period is going to be anywhere near fifteen million dollars. So-
Nobody's suggesting that.
Well, when you say words like it's a no-brainer and it's going to off-
I simply said that there was an offset in terms of the amount, there was an offset. I never said it was a complete offset. I said it was an offset that we were still calculating.
But in, to me, Ms. Haas, to me, a no-brainer is if I'm going to spend X millions of dollars, I'm going to get X millions of dollars. That, to me, is a no-brainer.
We are.
If it's fifteen million over five years and it's not fifteen million that I'm getting back on state aid, it's not a no-brainer. So I, and I just think that that's not fair to, to, to characterize that to Ms. Bodikashewski since she wasn't here at the last meeting.
Oh, she was free to watch last week's meeting.
All right, well, thank you. I have some questions for Dr. Haber, actually. If we could perhaps go back to the, um, district-wide enrollment history and projection chart? Um, is there, was there a nu, like, was there one that was just a single line? There was not one that was a single line? Okay. So, like, um, no, that was middle school. No, okay, so just the district-wide, just the district-wide, if you could?
There you go, you had it. I think you had it.
Okay, that, I think that would be fine. No, that's fine, that's district-wide. So my question, um, and I'd asked in committee, but I don't receive an answer, was, um, I know that, um, demography is an art in addition to, there is some science to it. I understand that there's, it's plus or minus five years because I think you'd said that you can't really go beyond five years, it's not accurate. And I forget, you had mentioned looking back five years also. I assume that this is historical.
I look back six years.
Excuse me?
I look back six years.
You look back six years.
Yeah.
So my question is, is if you were able to look at demography reports that the district had commissioned since the start of Hillsborough, like, you know, so say like in nineteen sixty-nine, and to look at that demography report to see, you know, when they were building Hillsborough High School in, you know, whatever, nineteen sixty-four, when they had the referendum to purchase land, et cetera, like, what those numbers projected the town would look like? And how accurate those demography reports were? Then, fast forward to, you know, recent times, like, for example, nineteen ninety-five, when the high school referendum failed twice, is that right? Yes, failed twice. What were the demography reports then? And what did they look like? And were they accurate for the next five years? Because to me, you know, I'm looking back at some historical enrollment numbers and seventy, I can't read that, seventy-seven hundred is high, but at one point, we were in the district in two thousand four to two thousand and six, so two years, we were like about seventy-seven thousand, actually, three years, two thousand and three to two thousand and six, in the seventy-six hundred student range. And I understand all about the incredible shrinking school, so I do understand that and I do appreciate that. But that was about ten years ago and I'm, or fifteen, fifteen years ago, and I'm not sure that special education or the requirements have changed significantly. So my question is, were, how, is the high school being used differently?
I'm sorry, Sid.
Is the high school being used differently in two thousand eighteen than it was in two thousand and three when the enrollment was seventy-six hundred students? Were the requirements for self-contained classrooms, small instruction groups, were they different? Have they gotten more stringent? So that was, I guess that's two questions.
Okay. The first, the first part of your question, um, it's fairly easy to get the numbers in terms of what the, the enrollments were in those years. I'm not sure if you archive enrollment projection studies going back fifty or sixty, you know, forty, fifty years. I, I, I can't answer that. But I guess the, the one thing that's really important to keep in mind is that, is that it, enrollment is cyclical. This district, I think, is fairly consistent in the seven thousands going back. I don't think it's ever been much below that, and I don't think it's ever been above that. I do, I don't think it's ever, you've never reached eight thousand, have you?
No.
No. So, um, you know, but, but there were so many things that have, you know, there's so many things that happened. I lived, just an example, I lived in one house for thirty-five years, uh, before I moved out here to the great state of New Jersey. I lived on Long Island. And I went through three stages in that houses. I lived in a development, a four-hundred thing development, house development. And when we first moved in, Halloween was, I mean, barrels of candy. And that lasted for about three years. And then there was a five-year period, no kids. And then there was a five-year period, there were a lot of kids. So I mean, so enrollment is cyclical, depends upon a number of things. My projections, the worst projections I ever made, um, were in two thousand and eight because virtually everything was thrown off because of the economics. So, so I think it's interesting what you're saying to look at. I'm not sure how it translates into what your needs are, and you're right. I, I'm not sure when, in nineteen ninety-six, I don't think that the requirements of special ed were terribly different. I think you needed, um, but, but I don't remember in the nineties OTPT and all of these other kinds of things coming into, into the fold. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure I have a good answer for you on that, uh, whether looking back would help or not. It might be interesting. So, and I'm understanding your question is, a high school was built based upon what projection was the projection right? Is that basically what you're saying?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What, what, what you were asking me was, when they built the high school in nineteen sixty-four, it was built upon, uh, there must have been an enrollment projection.
Well, actually, I can explain that because actually, uh, my colleague, Mr. Gillette, has a very interesting blog, Gillette on Hillsborough. I know, I know. Well, it was great history because I basically mapped out our town's schools. And so I believe that our students were going to Somerville, and Somerville said, we can't take you anymore. So we needed a high school.
Okay.
And that's kind of how it happens. Um, but then, as, you know, the, so the first referendum failed and the second one, this is nineteen sixty-four, then nineteen sixty-six it passes, um, and then it just goes through, you know, nineteen eighty-four, there's this first expansion, nineteen ninety-six, no, nineteen ninety-five, twenty-five years after the high school was built, the school board decide, and I don't know the reason, perhaps, Mr. Gillette, you can kind of-
The high school was, the high school was much smaller.
Was much smaller, okay.
Than it is now. You, you have to remember that. It was, we've had two, well-
So it was, so basically, in the first expansion, it went from a thousand students to sixteen hundred students, and so they needed more room. So I'm assuming there was a demog, demographic report that said that our district was going to increase, and it did increase because back then, it was in nineteen eighty-four, it was holding sixteen hundred students, and it had gone up to, you know, two, about two thou- students, and it had gone up to, you know, about 2,000, or 2,000, the report, the sheet that I have. So, but it's held steady about then. It went to a peak of 2,400 students in 2005 to 2006. I'm just, we're, we're being asked to make a very large decision based on a five-year projection. And I get that the anecdotal, like, you know, people who are in the school, my daughter's in AP physics, I mean, she, you know, so it's a large class. I was asking her how many, I don't know the number. But, so I, I understand, but we don't, we're guessing, is my, is my guess. I mean, it is a educated guess, it's a five-year prediction, but we don't know, it could be what year six will look like. And so that's a lot to ask the community if we're not confident in the numbers.
Well, you know, you can, if you, a non-scientific, can you go to the high school slide? Okay, no, the high school. Okay, that's the one. I mean, the high school has trended upward, all the way back, going back to the 2013, 14 school year, and the projection based upon the kids coming up in back of it, okay, are indicate, indicate that, that number, that the trend is continuing up. There's no reason to believe that it's, it, there's a limiting factor in everything, okay? Like, the architect said, what should I, EI guy said to me, Mike said, he said, you know, "What should I recommend for building a high school? You know, should I recommend 2,400, 2,500, 2,600?" I said, "Well, everything has a limiting factor. The population, number of housing units in a community have a limiting factor." But I think two things are going to happen, okay? And again, this isn't magic, it's, it's, it's just, you know, what is it? There's lies, damn lies, and statistics, is that the expression? And, you know, but, but you look, you look at this thing, you say, so, or at least I say, "What's going to happen now?" Okay, let's say you go to full-day kindergarten. That makes the community, which already has a good reputation for its schools, more attractive. So you get more people coming in with younger children, some of these developments. So that's going to, that's going to keep the demand up. I think that, when I looked at the community statistics, the median age, for New Jersey, it was relatively young. It was like in the high 30s to the low 40s, I don't quite remember. But again, still childbearing age for a number, you know, for a number of students. So, and I guess the other thing that you can do, just for the fun, you can take a look on the, on the, hang on. This is probably not what, not good enrollment projection fodder, but if you, if you go back, this ta, you know, this table, that if you go and you look, you count in four-year blocks. So for example, you've got your four-year high school now. Go back and look at your four-year grade levels behind that. Look at your four-year grade levels behind that and see what those numbers are adding up to. So in other words, if I looked at, if I looked at grades one, two, three, and four, well, yeah, in 2000, well, they, if I looked at grades one, two, three, and four, they're going to be kindergarten kids, or they're going to be high school kids like in 2028 or 2029, and that number is going to be well into the 2000s. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do, I do, but it's not 2,400. It's, I mean, if you're looking at grades, that's 503, 513, 513...
520, 515, 533, and 551, so it's 2,000.
Right, so that's, I mean, that's just 2,000. I mean, it's...
But that doesn't count special needs kids. These are general ed kids.
This is general ed.
So you go over, you got it?
Well, okay, so that's fair. But I wanted to just kind of go back to this...
Well, and just one more thing. Even if it's 2,300, that's still at a high level of capacity for that building. The building capacity is only 1,600.
I understand. No, that, it's, oh, you're saying the functional, the functional, okay.
And the other thing too is, remember, I'm just saying add these numbers up. If I took them down, they would have the multipliers. So this 520 would be multiplied by 1.046 or something like that when it went into the next year. So these are the numbers projected at. If I take them further, the numbers would be a little bit higher.
May I, may I interrupt just for, for a moment? When I read Dr. Haber's report, my, my takeaway was this. We currently have a district that is overcapacity by hundreds and hundreds of kids, close to 700 students. What I got from Dr. Haber's report is that we're going to grow, and whether it's 4%, up to 7%, if we don't do half-day K, that's kind of the range that the board needs to make his decision-making based upon. So we're going to be adding hundreds of kids when we're already above capacity by hundreds of kids, not by our analysis, by outside experts and what the DOE tells us is either above or below capacity. Being above capacity actually helps us when we build a new school because you get state aid from what's called unhoused kids, which is the difference between your adjusted facility capacity and what your actual enrollment is. And we know that that's in the hundreds district-wide. So that will help offset those costs, and that's why coming out accurately with cost estimates are so very important, that we truly have that. Now, that is also, has to be part of the calculus of our decision-making and the fact that we were actually bigger years ago. We actually had more kids. And I guess the question is, are we okay with that as a district? Because that's our glide path right now.
I have, Judy, I want, Dr. Schiff, can you go back to the overall, the chart, the district-wide? And while you're finding that, I want to thank Dr. Haber for this report. As I said in the operations committee meeting, and I'll say it here again in public, I've been on board a long time, and this is, was the best presented demography study that I've seen, and I've seen a few. Some we paid for, some we got for free, which were actually pretty good. But this is just, it was presented so well, so easy to understand, and so much detail that I really, and you're seeing just a, in the public now, we're just seeing a condensed slideshow of the actual report, which is much longer and goes into a great bit of detail, but fun reading, if you like this kind of stuff. So I did have one, one thing to say about the chart that we're looking at now, which goes back to 2013, which is almost near the, you know, it's just because, look, you look back five, six years, as Dr. Haber said, and that's just because that's what demographers do. It just happens to hit on just about the low point in the, in the district over the past, like, 15 years. That's just about the low point. So it, it makes the chart, and this has nothing to do with the functional capacity of the school or the district, I totally agree with Dr. Schiff on that, but just on the chart itself, it makes it look like, boy, school enrollment is just booming, it's just going straight up to the right off the charts. But as we discussed in the operations committee meeting, if you go back, if you had the chart starting from maybe 2006, I know Ms. Trujillo's looking at it right now, she's got it in front of her, it would be more like a V. And we said, we explained in operations committee that, well, there was a recession, a housing bust, so that accounted for the dip. Okay, so let's say there was no recession and no housing bust and just went, you'd see a much flatter line across the, across the chart. It would be much flatter, I think. So, you know, I think it's disingenuous to show this, and I know, and I'm not accusing Dr. Haber of doing that because that's not what he's doing. He's just showing projected growth, which I appreciate. But if you're going to use this to show out-of-control growth in our district, that's, that's not what it is. It's more about the shrinking school, how we use the school today, and I don't think it would be right to at all get away from that when we communicate this to the public. I think we have to stick with, with the way we use the schools today, that we, that a 600-capacity school, or all our elementary schools are rated, when they were built or added on to for 600 students, there's no way they're for 600 students now. They're probably for less than, well, as we know, they're slightly different, but around 400 or less in each school, so.
Plus, you know, several weeks ago, we also talked about hallways and staircases and other facilities that do not include the additional capacity as well.
And I think that's... Some of the function of that at the high school was, you know, building maybe a science wing where people only take, students only take one science during the day. So everybody that comes in for their science class in one wing, everybody has to come in, and then 45 minutes later, everyone needs to exit. Nobody's going to the classroom next door down the hall. They're all completely leaving that area. That, that's, that's an error that somebody made.
Yeah, but many of those classrooms are specialized for science.
Can I, can I ask one, just one, let me ask one question of you. Let's say, I believe in these projections, I stand by them, they're, you know, they're to the best of my ability to do, but let's just say for argument's sake, they're flat. Let's say that we, we went up to the blue line and then instead of going straight up, we kind of went flat, okay? You'd still have a problem.
Yes.
That's the point. You'd still have a problem. You'd still have an overcrowded high school. You still would not be able to implement a full-day kindergarten. So the point is that, you know, when people say, "Well, if we're stable," but if you're stable high, that's a problem. You know, so going up is just icing on the cake. That's, I think that becomes the point.
I think you're right.
If there's no other questions from the board?
There are, there are.
And?
And?
Get your student involved, too.
Yep, Matt.
I would just like to give this perspective. I worked in Hillsborough Township Public Schools for 23 years. There was one year when Amsterdam was about six years old, that we had the luxury of an empty classroom, which I asked our principal if I couldn't turn into a science resource room. For that year, we became a model school, an elementary school for the whole county, maybe the state, I'm not sure. But the ability to have that was an enhancement for the students' science enrichment. And sadly, the very next year, our population went up. That room was taken away and became a regular classroom, which it should have been because the children needed it. But in the long term, as I have worked in the district for that amount of time, as a specialist, I worked in a classroom, small room, that had four teachers in it, and that was a shared space where we had to juggle for times to have small group instruction in there without interrupting each other. We had, my very last two years in the district, I worked in a small classroom where the same situation existed, but I had myself and another teacher shared a very small classroom. And in that case, when we didn't want to interrupt each other, a teacher went in the hallway with their students and sat in the hallway. That is not, to me, the most conducive way to conduct our business as educators. But it happens because we are bursting at the seams. Why is that happening? Because people like our district, and they're coming here because we have a good education system. So how do we solve the problem? We can't, I, I tried doing outdoor classrooms when I was a science specialist. That's an iffy thing if it's a rainy day. So you really need to think about the modulators, I think, because there is no way around it as far as I can see from a teacher's perspective. We need the space. I'm not very happy to be sitting on the board and having to make these important decisions at this time in my life because I'm a senior citizen here. I, above all people, don't want to see our taxes going up, so we're going to have to think creatively and out of the box to be able to do this. So let's put our heads together and find ways to reduce the funding that we are getting, find ways to, to build on what we can, and not talk always about how sad we are that we have to raise taxes. Sorry, people.
Okay. I think, you know, thank you for bringing this back to programmatic issues and to also point out that for many, many years, we have been making do with what we have. This is not a new situation. I mean, every school has their own story, but I'm sure, and Amsterdam frankly was the newest of the elementary schools.
And Amsterdam is now over 25 years old.
Yeah, I know.
27, 28 years. When was it built? 1990.
Yeah, yeah. But yes, but there's also been a significant building increase since, I mean, it's not only the student numbers that go up, but it's also the ratable numbers that go up. And our ratables over the last two years have gone up by $300 million, okay? We are just short of $6 billion in ratables in this town, when several years ago, it was 5.5, 5.6. So there is additional, there is an additional denominator when you're calculating your taxes, which impacts how much each person pays. It gets spread out over more households. So that's, that's one of the other offsets that we would want to calculate accurately for the public, so. Okay. Matt, you had a comment?
Yeah, just one more thing I'd like to bring up before we finish discussing Dr. Haber's presentation. The one point you made about the physics C class, I believe it was, the 38 students running one section, I, I thought that was a great point. I've noticed personally that there are a lot of situations similar to that one where there's one or two sections of a specific class running that is in high demand. For instance, last year when I was trying to schedule, or sophomore year when I was trying to schedule my science classes, I was planning on taking physics II, which apparently only has one section, I found that out as I was trying to schedule, and a biology course. And because of the way the lab situations work, physics II was running one period that, one period each day that year, and it was very difficult to schedule a combination where I could have both sciences back-to-back with a gym in between. It was like, that's, that's what I needed to do. And I ended up not being able to take the course because there was so little, there was only one course running each day. So that got delayed for me a year, and I wanted to take that before I graduated. So I'd just like to say, there are a lot of instances, instances like that, and thank you very much for bringing that up. I really enjoyed your presentation.
Matt, if I may just not put you on the spot because we all know the answer to this, let me just ask you, where does the robotics team meet?
It's actually...
What room of the high school does that club meet?
It's, it's not in the high school, it's a separate warehouse.
I know that.
It's, it's near, it's, it's right off of, behind Wendy's on 206. It's like a warehouse behind there.
Okay, and how do kids get there?
There's a bus, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Which is free or costs money?
Well, that's part of the dues per, when you sign up for the club, there's, you can either fundraise, or there's, I believe it was $80 for dues per person.
I have a problem with that. I really do. And I think it goes to the point that you pay one way or the other, and that's just one of many, many organizations in the high school that can't be housed there, not to mention storage of old robots and other things.
Yeah, that is an issue.
There's like no storage space in any of our schools for records or equipment or, you know, construction items that have been built in the past. And I think it's really important to add that all into this. This is an educational value issue. Any other comments?
Most of my comments were actually said very well by Mr. Gillette, so thank you very much, Greg. You know, just, I, I do appreciate the fact that the shrinking school is more of our issue than, than population growth, though I do note that in your numbers for both kindergarten, going from half-day to full-day, I thought that was actually very conservative. Both my kids went to full-day kindergarten off-site, and, you know, we literally grew from kindergarten of two, you know, two or three half-day sessions at, at Triangle to four full, four full days. So 33% growth is, I think, conservative. Likewise, when I look at those potential apartment units going up with two- and three-bedroom apartments, I don't think anybody's going to rent for the rents in Hillsborough unless they're occupied those bedrooms with students. People come here, like everybody says, because we have a wonderful educational program. We need to maintain that educational program. I think what everybody needs to realize is, these are two separate issues, the high school and what's happening in March. And the majority of March is not about growing programs, though a good chunk of it is going to be full-day K. That's more about maintaining what we have now, which is tight, and, and we're doing everything we possibly can, you know, as they say, squeezing the nickel till the buffalo screams. And, and, you know, we hear those screams every day, and it is going to be incredibly difficult if we have to face these, these state aid cuts. And I appreciate Mrs. Trujillo trying to be very frank about the situation in that, yes, we're talking about stemming off potentially $3-plus million of state aid cuts, but the taxpayer pays for that upfront. And eventually, you know, we, we as a town benefit from that, and it is up to future school boards what to do with that. It's... It's not going back to the taxpayer immediately, but that helps the school board maintain future tax increases. So I think it's, it's, that's really important to say, is that over, over time, it will hopefully stabilize the tax increases. And maybe with ratables continuing going up, we might be able to, to actually see a zero year, like we almost did this year with only $9 on the average home. So, you know, I think everybody has to judge what's best for them. I absolutely agree with Mrs. Bogachewski. We need to get these numbers out as soon as we possibly can to have people plan accordingly. And, you know, hopefully people tune in, and hopefully we build a website with this great information on it. I think it's important that the, that the town be able to access this. Thank you.
And just to reiterate for the public, all of the presentations that have been given for the last several meetings are on our website, as well as all of our board meetings. So please educate yourselves. There has been a ton of information put out there, and there's been a ton of discussion among the board in terms of all of the same issues that we talk about again. So please, you know, take a look at the tapes, they're worth watching.
I have, I promise it'll be quick. So I just wanted to go, one thing about the being creative, I didn't actually realize, I guess, that a lot of this traffic was the science wing. I mean, wouldn't it be cheaper to just remodel part of the school and move some of the science classes to, like, I don't know, like, it just seems like it would be a lot less than building a new high school, that was one. But the second is, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Dina, but I feel like we've kind of, Dina brought up a great point, is, and also Dana, regarding what happens if full-day kindergarten passes, but the high school referendum fails. And I really think the more I hear and listen to all this happen and go on, and I realize, you know, we would delay the offsets and state aid, but I think it's very risky, and I really, I would be in favor of only going out in March for the loss in state aid and our, and our surplus cuts, and waiting for the high school referendum in the fall to do, talk about full-day kindergarten. I think it really confuses the issue to put maintaining programs in addition to adding a program, because it's, I think it's, I don't, I mean, there's five people in the audience, right? I mean, I don't think the community really understands it. And as we've said, it is our job as a school board to make the decision for the community or help and guide. And given that we are the nine people who have done our homework and research, I think it's, it's not, I think we would be remiss in, in taking that risk of spending the money upfront with modular classrooms for the sole purpose of speeding up our reduction in loss of state aid. Like, I don't think that makes sense. And I think Dana and Dina's points were, were really strong and important, and I think we should consider that.
I don't think we're doing it to speed up our state aid. We're doing it because we feel the people of Hillsborough serve a full-time kindergarten.
Why now?
For programmatic educational purposes.
No, but why now?
Because 85% of the state has already gone there.
But when Hillsborough-
And because state standards have been developed for a full-time kindergarten program.
So states-
And for all of the reasons that we've gone through at multiple board meetings. I mean, tune into our last meeting, we had a very thorough discussion of that, and it was pretty clear to me that most of the board was in favor of proceeding with this.
I actually think that the, that the debate at the dais is very important, because we, this will be the same debate that we're going to hear throughout our community. And the more that we're able to refine our understanding of the reasons why, the more that we hold ourselves accountable for, for the decisions and making good decisions, I think the better we serve our community. And Chris.
A couple of things, actually, I'll go backwards, I want to address the why now. I understand your point, but I would counter that with, why didn't we do this three years ago? Why didn't we do it five years ago? We lag way behind here, and I understand your point, you could make the same argument that we should have done this years ago, and we're just catching up. So I think we, when you look at from the, and I don't look at it just as numbers, but when I look at it from the educational perspective, I think we should have done this before now. So to the why now, I would say, why haven't we yet? That's one point. To answer one of the questions you asked for Dr. Haber before about special needs, rules change, everything that, I don't think there has been, Greg likes to make, like I've been on this board since the beginning of time, or close to it, there haven't been a lot of changes in the regulations. What there has been is a higher percentage of people, of classified students, for two reasons. One, because people move here because we're good, so we, our, our special needs population grows faster than the normal average because we have the ones we have, and people keep coming in specifically for that, not because the normal percentage of each class moving forward, people move here for that. So our numbers go up faster than the percentage. Also, and this is purely anecdotal, I don't have the numbers, but in my memory over the years, the, the rate that students are being classified as a percentage of students has been going up. So not that the regulations have changed, but the classification numbers have changed. What happens from that, though, is that because the numbers change, and the regulations require so much more resource per student in terms of not being able to put so many in a classroom, and sort of inverted, a smaller classroom, but as those numbers go up, the regulations haven't changed, but the regulations just hit us harder. So that, I think, has been part of the impact over that time, not regulatory change, but just a, a faster-than-normal growth in a special needs population. The last thing I want to say, I think Greg, you were right, that if we, you know, it's, if we do this 3 million thing in five years, it's 15 million. But the reality is, while it will lag because the state wasn't going to cut our funding all in one shot, if they don't cut our funding by 3 million, that's 3 million per year that they didn't cut our funding. So that would also be 15 million, it'll just be staggered a little bit because in the first year it would be only a 1 million impact, I think in the second year, two, then we get to three, but then that three keeps repeating, just like the 3 million cost does. So while it's fair to say it's 15 million for the five years of the full-day kindergarten, you also have to say it's going to be 15 million of not-cut taxes. It's not just 3 million of not-cut taxes. If you're going to use five years, it's five years for both. There's just, there will be a lag on the tax impact because it's not done right up front, but it will be the same numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Are we ready to move on? Okay.
No, let's go on.
Yeah, really.
We want to thank Dr. Haber for his analysis. Thank you very much.
Excellent report.
I do reiterate, I didn't say that during the process, your staff has been absolutely incredible. The principals, the people I spoke to in the district were helpful, incredible, and I enjoyed, I really did enjoy it, meeting with them.
Thank you, Dr. Haber.
Take care. Good night, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy holidays.
I have a couple of other announcements to share with the public and the board. The Hillsborough Middle School Drama Club will present Sherlock Holmes, The First Baker Street Irregular, based on the characters and mysteries of Sir Arthur Conan Doyle. Shows are at the Hillsborough Middle School on Friday and Saturday, December 7th and 8th at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, December 9th at noon. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the door. Break a leg to all the cast and crew of the Middle School Drama Club. Also, each year on the stage of Sunny Mead School, volunteers create a magical place for, for school students to be transported to as a way of sparking their creative writing. This year's magical spot was a fairy tale forest that included everything, from Tinkerbell captured in a jar and owls with glowing eyes, to Rapunzel's braided flowing hair from a castle and a magical bridge to cross. Thank you to all of those amazing teachers and, and parents and others who, who worked hard to make this a wonderful project. A special thank you to Mr. Ari Dulgas and Mrs. Dawn Purdy, who dreamed up the theme each year and lead a team of volunteers in its creation. Visit the district's Facebook or Twitter page to see some pictures of the fairy tale forest. And I have to say, I was actually there today. It was absolutely phenomenal. The kids actually walk onstage. It's an area where they can sit and do creative writing. I go there every year. It's hard to say that each year can be better than the next, but it's truly the case. Wonderful job to the teachers of Sunny Mead. Also, the Hillsborough High School Guidance Department will be hosting a program on early college planning tomorrow, November 27th at 6:30 PM in the high school auditorium. The program is for freshmen and sophomore parents, and will focus on helping parents and students get a head start on the college selection process and application development. That's all I have.
Okay. I have a real quick report. I just wanted to report that at the NYU Model UN Conference, our team, headed by Mr. Fenster, won the Best Large Delegation Award and nine individual awards, including three Best and two Outstanding Delegate Awards. So let's hear it for the Model UN. I would also like to say that in our last newsletter for the district, there was like a very tiny little link that went to something on, on the high school report, and it linked to several articles that were written by our students for, and that are on the website of the National Endowment for the Humanities Program on Reconstruction at the University of South Carolina. And it was Mr. Fenster, Mr. Longo, and Mr. Moscow's US History One Honors classes that created visual issue, visual essays on historical issues of race and ethnicity by drawing connections between post-Civil War and today's issue. And they were really thoughtful and really well-written. So if any of you passed over that when reading the newsletter, please go back and read it because they were very awesome. I'd also like to commend the First Lego League for their Borough Blast, and our Hillsborough Middle School robotics team finished first in that, and our own Ann Harris judged. And would you like to make some comment about that?
Well, I would just like to say that the team that actually won the Champions Award also won the second place in robotic performance, but our, our Team 8896, which was the Hillsborough Middle School, took first place in robot performance. And I can only wonder what would happen if they had a bigger space to work in so that they could actually be on task all the time instead of having to travel from one place to another to do things. So it's been my honor to be a judge in that competition for 10 years now, and I never get to see the Hillsborough teams because I am a Hillsborough person. So I hope that sometime we'll get to invite them here to do a little bit of their robotic performance for us, so everybody can see how fantastic that is.
That would be great. That would be fun, too. So thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do. Okay, I guess we can move on to committee reports. Education?
Certainly. The Education Committee met on November 13th. All members were in attendance. Thank you very much. We reviewed and unanimously recommended the curriculum that is up for approval this evening for English Language Arts, Grade 7. We also reviewed and unanimously recommended the course proposal that we are hopefully approving tonight, AP Chinese at Hillsborough High School. It seems like just yesterday we were approving Mandarin to enter our schools, and now we need it AP classes at the high school. So it's great that we have that interest. We also heard the results of the Pride Survey. So for people who don't, are not aware of what that is, that is an alcohol and drug survey that is available commercially, you pay a per-student rate. In this case, Empower Summer Set paid for this through a grant to our district, actually to the municipal alliance. So we heard from Mr. Gil Pilarde, who's an SAC at the high school, a student assistance counselor, and Mrs. Mindam Maggio, who is life skills coordinator. The survey was performed in March, and we made it available to all 8th through 12th grade students. They needed parental permission. So we had 791 participants, that's 27%, which is a very good rate. Previously, we had a much lower rate of parents giving approval. In the future, we hope to include it in that, in the random drug testing permission slip form, so that we could even get more students involved. 75 questions with 10 additional questions that were put on the survey by Hillsborough. Those were mostly specific to the vaping issue because the Pride Survey doesn't have that as part of it. We reviewed the risk and protective factors. I believe they're coming at some point to give a presentation, so I don't want to give their whole presentation. But when we reviewed the actual results of use among the students that, that participated, there weren't a lot of surprises with respect to use in the last 30 days. About 11% of our students said they had used alcohol, 7.8% said they had vaped, and 2.6% said they had used marijuana. Obviously, a problem, all three of those, though not surprising, and actually less than what a lot of people would have expected based on the comments that have been made. The other areas went into where do they, where can they access the alcohol and things like that? So again, not a surprise, they, the majority of them commonly use it either at their own homes or at their friends' homes, and mostly on weekends. So I hope that we can get them in soon so that they could give the presentation not only to the board, but to the whole community. The Education Committee recommended that an instant alert go out to the whole community prior to that, so that people would know when it was going to be presented, so that they could come and participate and hear the, the results. We also discussed the referendum, the reconfiguration analysis, analysis of full-day kindergarten and state aid, very much of what we saw at the last board meeting. We got an update on the results of the, the new policy on vaping, or making vaping paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia in our policy that we passed last December. So from December 2017 through June 2018, 36 students were caught with vaping paraphernalia. All of those students then get tested as part of that policy. Six tested positive for marijuana, two refused testing, they're assumed to be positive, so they follow that protocol of meeting with the SACs and, and the in-school suspensions. 28 negative results. We also discussed the use of the passive alcohol sensor devices at the homecoming dance, they were used again, no positive tests. So that is seen as a deterrent, I think, among the students. We discussed standards for blocking websites and how teachers can work to get the sites unblocked, and I think everybody was supportive of the, of the positions that the district has taken and how they're working with students, with teachers to unblock helpful, what they think is helpful sites. We've done an in-depth analysis of AP courses over the past two meetings. We've evaluated the number of students taking the different courses, what percentage of those go on to take the test, what percentage of those score threes, fours, or fives, and the impediments that might be present for students to take AP courses if they so choose. Last year, we had 1,208 students take AP tests. This year, we're at 1,400 students. So, sorry, AP classes, not AP tests. So, so that is a tremendous increase. The administration continues to review how to diversify the student population and not significantly drop performance at the same time. And one thing that we're looking forward to is that the administration is going to be revising rubrics for early-grade level decisions on mathematics and things like that, that happened way back in 5th grade, and parents don't realize that you're setting your child on a certain path that makes it very difficult to jump barriers later on. The update on 2020 graduation, nothing new. The Rutgers Rack is not taking reservations prior to January 1st, so Mrs. Bingert is going to be on the phone with them on January 2nd, trying to get our date, and we'll come back to the Education Committee with the confirmed date so we can formulate the calendar based on that. And then we also discussed concurrent enrollment online with Mercer County Community College, specifically the financial literacy course. And that is it for me.
Okay, thank you. Greg for Operations.
Thank you. I'll also try to be brief. Whoever's trying to be brief, I don't know. Was that you? No, it wasn't you. It was somebody. But I'll try to be brief also. Operations met on November 14th. We discussed a number of items. The first one you'll see is the three policies that are on for first reading tonight. They were all, these were no-brainers, actually. They were very easy. The breakfast offer versus serve, the electronic signatures, and the procurement procedures for school nutrition. As you know, when we had the issue with lead at our schools, we had some initial testing done by a company called PARZ Environmental. We thought they did a good job, but their testing actually did not follow state procedure, so we had to have it redone. So, we're looking into what we can do about that because essentially, we had it done more times than we should have had done. Let's just leave it at that. I see attorney shaking, nodding his head like, yep, I'm looking into it. So, we're going to look into what we can do about that. We shouldn't have had to have that done twice. Then, we're going to have some donations from the Hillsborough Diamond Club. They're going to donate, that's the Baseball Booster Club. They're going to donate some bleachers that they got from Hillsborough Little League and they're going to donate insulation of a sprinkler system for the varsity baseball field. The Committee unanimously recommends that. We talked about the, everything you saw tonight on the demographic study, different referendum analysis, all that stuff we've been talking about for the last couple of weeks. We are still reviewing the remnants of what's still outstanding about the ESIP. That was the $16 million program to change the energy, how we do. Energy savings. It's an energy savings plan. We changed all the light bulbs in the districts and did some other things. We're not exactly sure that we got everything that we wanted out of that. We got many, many good things. I'd say 90% of it is really good, but we want to get 100% good. So, we're still looking into closing up a few things on that. And I think Mr. LaCare is also looking into that for us so that you can figure that out and figure out why I'm not saying too much about it. Also, we had discussion about maybe a new playground at HES and what the board would contribute to that. I think that's going to be a question for the discussion. The Board's very supportive, the Committee's very supportive for having a new playground at HES, especially since the playground itself is going to be donated through the fundraising of the HSA, parents, and whatnot. I know Mr. Cooper is involved with that, but there might be some other costs, so we're going to have to nail those down and see what they're going to be. Mr. Quintaro was there. He's our Building and Grounds Director. And I remember his name. And he talked about the HVAC projects that are going on in the district now. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And personnel, Chris?
I actually am going to be brief. Human Resources Committee met on the 19th. We had a very good in-depth discussion about some of these referendum questions that we've been discussing tonight, including the reconfiguration analysis and the analysis of full-day kindergarten, both as a program and as it has a financial impact. We also had a preliminary discussion on some staffing requests for instructional aides that are still being worked out.
Okay. Well, I'm still going to give the shortest report. The Governance Committee meeting took place before the last meeting, so I don't have a report at all tonight. I gave it last time. Okay. So, can we move on? Any comments or questions about committee reports? We're all covered. Yay. Okay. Then, we can move on to comments from the public, public input on the action agenda, and public input on the 2019-20 budget we'll take together and hopefully get through. In any case, we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public may speak. One time is right now that you can speak about any agenda item before we vote on it. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum for any topic. And before you make your comments, state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And with that, Thomas?
Yes. I'll make it very quick. Thomas Abili, Nine Upper Neshanet Court. So, I won't talk about the tax issue. I think I've mentioned that many times here before. And I'm sure to talk about that again, but that's not why I'm here this evening. I had a, the report put forth by Dr. Hager was very interesting, insightful and the like. It was very good. So, when he brought up the idea of modular classrooms, I feel like we're looking at it in a very narrow perspective when it comes to, we want to provide full-day kindergarten for the younger students. But if we have to give up eight classrooms, how is it going to affect the educational outcomes of those students who will have to be in trailers? Thank God, when I went through the school system, I didn't have to be in a trailer. But as I said, I think we're looking at it in a very narrow-minded way in the sense that we're saying, we want to provide the full-day kindergarten, but we might have to have these modular classrooms for a period of time. So, I was just curious as to how we might think that might impact the educational outcomes of these students who will have to be in trailers.
The kindergartners wouldn't be there. The idea would be that either if we had office space that is currently filling a particular classroom, that would be moved out there. That's rare that we have that in the district. But less rare is putting a special area like music out there to make sure that the kids are escorted back and forth or small group instructional space. I'm not sure that there's going to be an educational impact of a child learning in a trailer versus learning in a permanent place, at least for that period of time. It is an inconvenience and it's meant to be temporary. That's what that is. Now, there is more impact on putting a program on a cart. Like currently, our world language program is on a cart because we don't have space that's available for them. That impacts their ability to set up a classroom, to have an instructional environment that is rich with the print and other types of decorations and informational materials, student work that is displayed within the classroom.
Well, I'll just say, as a student who went through the school system, I had a mixture of world language teachers who some had carts and some did not. I would say that those who had carts had to be a little bit more creative, but I got just as great of an education as it referred to those teachers who had to travel versus those who did not when it referred to the world language. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public input? Be careful.
Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire Court. I just want to expand on what was already said about the special ed students. In addition to the ones that require small group instruction, even the kids that are mainstreamed into regular classes, a lot of them also take a study skills class, which requires, that class has to be a small number of students since they're all special ed. So, that also impacts on the amount of space that would be necessary. When we invite how good we are with our special ed program, we invite more and more special ed students to come. Even if they're mainstream, they still require more space. So, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you very much.
Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School, Social Studies. Just a quick comment about the conversation that was had earlier about the overcrowding issues at the high school. While it's a very good point about the science wing, about most students having to leave and enter each period, I really hope that the Board looked at the video that was provided a couple meetings, a few meetings back that shows the overcrowding. Come to the school sometime during sixth-period lunch when I have lunch duty and there is literally not a seat in the entire room available for anybody. When students, when we're blessed with good health and all of the students are actually in school, it's a nightmare. And they have 25 minutes to eat that lunch. You should see what the line looks like for lunch. Try to squeeze down the main stairway in the, going into the commons. The school is horribly overcrowded. I've been here for 26 years. It's a serious issue, not just in the science wing, but the entire building. We also, in the honors classes that I teach, we went from an average of, I think it was 18 students, to now 25 students for each of our classes, which is still manageable, but it's getting harder to actually give the students the attention that we're supposed to be giving them in terms of one-on-one opportunities that we typically have. So, just thought I'd remind everybody of those videos and hopefully, we can find a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Goody, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. I realize that my questions will be rhetorical, so I don't expect answers to any of them. But as the Board considers where we go and what the point is going forward from here, I would ask them to reflect on, you know, there was conversations about what was 1996 like, what is 2006 like, how are we here now? Consider the conditions of those classrooms at the time. How many classrooms in 1996, 2006, 2016 had to be moved into the library because there was improper heating within that classroom or because there was a phantom odor that we couldn't identify and we needed to tear the classroom apart to remediate it? How many classrooms had to be relocated into the gym because of improper heating and cooling systems and we had to pack 500 kids into the gym over there? How many classrooms did we have to close down because of mold in those years? How many kindergarten classrooms did we have to wade through raw sewage to get the kids out of because they weren't properly maintained? How many other classrooms are we looking at in historical context that this is no longer a relevant conversation to use that lens for? We have to look at the current state of what we have and is it working? And I'm telling you as a taxpayer and as a parent, no, it's not. It's not acceptable. My daughter should be able to go to the library and have that time not be disrupted because we had to shift other kids in there because the classroom's no longer suitable for them. That's a basic thing that they should be able to expect. The students here should be able to go to gym, but they can on certain days because they can't go outside because it's too hot, but they can't go in there because we have, you know, kids in there for a cooling station. So, while I admire the work that's gone into this and I certainly appreciate the historical context that's going to be applied to it, at some point, we have to accept and look at the realities of what is before us, and that is what it is. These are the rooms that we're dealing with. And in 96 and 2016, the roofs were in a lot better shape. Because I can guarantee you, in 1996, we probably weren't looking at a hole in the ceiling down that hallway that had a bucket underneath it because we had to refill it every couple of hours. So, there's a lot that needs to be taken into consideration in this. As a taxpayer, certainly, I am sensitive to financial impacts as well, but the educational realities of what our students and staff face must be given credence in this. And I thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Action agenda.
Can I come?
Judy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I part of the public? Can I comment real quick? I just want to bring up, should I state my name in my?
We know who you are.
I want to bring up that, you know, again, we're talking about trailers as if they're construction trailers, as if they're these broken-down dilapidated. My high school had temporary-permanent trailers. We had health class in there and some other class in there. And they were nice. They were nicely carpeted, which our classrooms are. They were air-conditioned. They had all the windows and stuff. And also, it was kind of nice sometimes. You get to walk outside and get some fresh air because, not to point out that there is mold in some of the rooms. You know, it's nice to have fresh air every now and then. It was pointed out by someone at the podium. But again, it's not that, it's not a punishment to go outside. It's not a punishment that you have to walk to another building or trailer or whatever it is. It's sometimes nice. The kids get to see the outside. They get to breathe the outside air. They get to, almost like they're going on a class trip. So, I think the perspective needs to change from, we're out of room, so we have to put this temporary trailer out and, you know, force our kindergarteners or whoever to be in that trailer. Again, kids view things as a different lens than adults do. Kids, this is fun almost to be in an outdoor space. Where, you know, adults, they don't want to ever go outside. You know, kids like to have classes outside like we have in some of our places and they're trying to accommodate things like that. So, that's my perspective and all for temporary modular trailer classroom, whatever you want to call it.
Modular classroom. You know, every other meeting, I've corrected people who've used the word trailers and this time, I've just given up and thank you for bringing that up. They are modular classrooms. They're actually quite nice or they could be quite nice. And, you know, they will be well-constructed and well-placed.
And they're also newer than 1965 or where, when was HES built? 1950. So, I don't think these modular classrooms were built in 1950.
No, they're practically new.
Yes.
So, in any case, I'm sure that will be very acceptable, certainly, to the children. Okay. Okay. Anyway, can we move on?
Moving on.
Action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, including to approve travel-related expenses, the head determination list, new courses, and revised curriculum as reported out of committee, and to approve the overnight trip as listed.
May I have a motion and a second for items 9.1 through 9.5, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, including approve the resolution to extend the athletic site supervisor position at Hillsborough Middle School through the winter season. Also, to approve the revised leaves as listed. Also, to approve the revised long-term substitutes as listed. Revise the interim health and PE supervisor position, as well as approve six-period coverage, approve transfers and changes in assignment, approve leaves, and approve the appointments of long-term subs, coaches, co-curricular advisors, and substitutes as attached. Also, approve student-teachers and extra-period coverage.
Okay. May I have a motion and second for items 10.1 through 10.10, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we have informational items in relation to suspensions and HIV issues. And we're back to comments from the Board and public on old business. Yes, Mrs. Harris.
Ms. Trillo and I attended the Sustainable Jersey for Schools workshop, which was a full-day workshop at the Duke Farms. And in looking at the 15 pages of items that we could be working on to show a more sustainable school system, I think that we could earn a few grants by increasing our efforts to be a more sustainable school district. So, I will be shortly...
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we have informational items in relation to suspensions and HIV issues. And we're back to comments from the board and public on old business. Yes, Mrs. Harris?
Ms. Trheo and I attended the Sustainable Jersey for Schools workshop, which was a full-day workshop at the Duke Farms. And in looking at the fifteen pages of items that we could be working on to show a more sustainable school system, I think that we could earn a few grants by increasing our efforts to be a more sustainable school district. So, I will be shortly presenting a proposal to the education committee to look at, and perhaps we can move on from there as to some things that would help to get this started in our district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes.
So, we had some of the fall sports teams here tonight. That was hours ago.
Yes.
Actually, it was like two hours and twenty minutes ago. But I, they did mention, I want to talk about boys cross-country. They did mention that they were at a regional meet in Wapentures Falls, New York this past Saturday. I attended. It was really awesome. I just wanted to commend Senior Ryan Mitchell, who came in first in his race. That was about over two hundred boys in that league, and it was very exciting. That course, that cross-country course of three point one miles is probably the most ruling, difficult course any of these boys will run in high school. It's tremendous hills. Spectators were completely worn out, especially if you're over fifty, fifty-five like me. It was incredibly cold, and those hills, just to get from a viewing place to another viewing place was really hard. I needed a medal to tell you the truth. Because that was, it was very difficult. But, so I wanted to mention this because the team of boys that went up there were the top runners at the high school, and they did come in third place in their, in their division. There's two divisions, so they were in the lower division this year. But hey, it doesn't matter. In the lower division, you might as well come and get some, you know, medal out of it or whatever. So, they got a nice award out of it. So, it was a really exciting day. So, congratulations, Hillsborough Boys.
Yeah, awesome. You know, I love cross-country. I mean, it's one of my favorite sports here because, you know, most of our sports are, you know, like team, team sports, whereas cross-country, everybody can attend and everybody can get out of it what they wish to get out of it. And some kids rise to the top and are the fastest as any group. But it's also wonderful for kids who just want to run after a long, hard day of school, and it develops for them a lifetime habit. I mean, you can't necessarily play football when you're fifty-five, but you could certainly go running when you're fifty-five and...
Did I add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Along the same lines, I did want to mean to say this today, but I forgot now. You reminded me. Cross-country, they begin training on their own in June, like the day after the meet of champions, spring track, which maybe is like June tenth. Okay? They train June tenth. Their season just ended, November twenty-fourth. They ran maybe five meets this year. You saw the boys soccer team up here. They had a record of, I don't know whether it was sixteen and one and two or something. And I played a lot of games and stuff. By the way, when you're practicing soccer, you're kind of playing soccer. When you're practicing basketball, you're shooting baskets. When you're training for cross-country, you're just out there on the road running. There's nothing really fun about it. So, I don't know why another sport requires this dedication and commitment, the cross-country for five or six meets for like a five-month season. So, another, and also, like you said, Judy, it's an individual sport. If you're a shy kid, no one has to make a block for you. No one has to set a pick for you. No one has to pass you the ball. You just have to go do it. And it's, it's really important to have a sport like that, no cut at the high school. So, anybody with your, the most popular kid in school or whatever your condition is, you can go out there and have a great time and succeed in something.
Yeah. Great sport.
I won't talk about that anymore this year, don't worry. I won't talk about that.
That's okay.